Yes, now?
Yeah. I think so.
All right. You sure, John? All right, thank you, sir. All right, we're back.
That's it, that's it for me, so.
Oh, that was it, okay.
No, 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 they got to do the finance report first and then.
Um, all right, you want to do financial report or you want to take um the senior class out of, out of order so they can come in and get your stuff?
Good, sir. I vote to move the senior class update out of order so we can get them up first and then we can go to financials.
Uh, Chair will second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries four zero. Uh, ladies, if you want to come up and.
Vote. I'm starting to react.
Hi, um, thanks for bringing us back here. I just want to give you all an update on our buses for prom.
Jess, can you just um, just say your name just for the.
Oh, yes. I'm Jessica Brumberg and this is.
Madeline Feminel.
Uh, we're the president and vice president of the senior class. So after last school committee meeting, um, our advisor had found a charter bus company and was working to get it approved for us to use. Unfortunately, we were unable to secure enough buses, so we couldn't use this company. And after lots of discussion and weighing um all of the options, all our options that we had, we decided the best route for us was to use just school buses. Financially, we'll be saving over $4,000, which will allow us to give free prom tickets to any Saugus High School senior who wishes to attend. And our advisor, Ms. D, she's going to be like decorating the buses and like, um, you know, all the stuff to make the night extra special. While it is a bit of a letdown that we weren't able to get the charter buses, um, it's really great to be able to um have all seniors participate in any senior events of their choice for free. For the senior class, the benefits of having prom and senior week completely free of charge are much greater than getting to ride there in a charter coach bus. I've wanted to give my class everything they've expected in regards to senior week and being able to give them this for free is a great achievement for us and it really shows the hard work that we've put in for the last four years is really paying off. We had like coach buses, I guess, like a goal, but the being able to, we still couldn't meet, but being able to meet the goal of free prom and free senior week is a lot greater. And I do really appreciate um you guys, the school committee, for your efforts in trying to help us. However, it is the best option for us to travel in school buses. We worked extremely hard these last four years, um, and so I know that all of the work is going to be paid off and our senior week will definitely be a week for my class to remember. And I'm excited, excitedly looking forward to enjoying this last month and a half left I have here at Saugus High.
Well, I'm going to tell you one thing, Jess, um, that's what leadership's all about, just what you did right there, you know? That's what being a great leader is all about. You get thrown a curveball and you came back and got out of the pocket. You got free tickets, you got a free senior week, that's just incredible leadership for both you guys, your whole class, really.
Yeah, and I think our class, speaking to our class as a whole, um, we're just the best, I'm just rolling it with whatever's thrown at us. We've gone through like every wringer, I think, possible, going from like since eighth grade to now even, like, we've gone through everything and it just really shows like kind of who our class is as people and it's just a test to that.
Yeah, you guys should be proud of yourselves because that's uh, like your feet right there, so.
Yeah, and everybody, I mean, everybody's excited, nobody was like super let down. And like we told them, like, uh, we're going to put a red carpet in the buses, like, we'll have speakers on the buses, like, everybody will get a goody bag, like, it'll, it'll be great, yeah.
Yeah, it's more about the prom anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, let me ask you a question, uh, is the prom open to, like, if you have a date that's from another school?
Yeah, so, well, um, it's free for all of our seniors to, like, to go, but if you're taking like a grade, uh, guests from another grade or from out of school, it's just going to be like forty, like fifty dollars for their ticket, which is like if we had a charge, like, say, any, anything for prom would be around like twenty-five dollars, you're paying like fifty dollars for both tickets anyways.
Yeah.
So it's like, it's good.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Very good, you guys got any other updates going on?
Um, we were just wondering about, like, just for the senior week as a whole, we know that um, the senior parade in town is usually something that the seniors do, so I was just wondering if that would be like kind of in the cards for us to do, like, we know we ought to get like a police detail and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's um, definitely something we can, we can put together, I think. I think the only issue with, with that would be the dates, um, because you guys graduate on the thirty-first, uh, the twenty-seventh is the Monday and that's Memorial Day, so it would have to be the week before. And I know the police do not allow Friday or, they don't do a Friday because they're worried about what happens after. So it would have to be a Wednesday or Thursday night. But, like you said, as long as everybody's talked it out and um, you know, we can, we can talk offline too, because um, we can make it happen.
Yeah, I think that's something that we don't be like.
It's a lot of fun, it really is, you know? Yeah, I know ones in the past have been real fun, you know? So.
We just have to, Mr. Chair, we just have to make sure the police are all on board.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We had um, remember a couple years ago where the kid was sitting in the back of a four-wheeler on, on the, on the back of a pickup truck?
Something like that.
Yeah, I'm hoping we'll have that again. Yeah, so, we got, like I said, there was some rules that uh, we put in place when we first did it and um, it's mostly, um, obviously everybody's safe, no kids drive, it's all parents drive or responsible adult. Yeah, so, yeah, we can talk. And um, yeah, still, yeah, fun time, so. You guys will love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm really proud of both of you.
Thank you guys for your hard work.
Yeah, really proud. You guys should come back and speak to the senior class of, you know, the following class that's going to graduate because they could really use your leadership. I think it's good for students to teach other students, that would be awesome.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's what it's all about, so you guys did a wonderful job.
All right. All right, thank you, ladies, uh, now we'll go back to the finance report with Ms. Andrews.
Thank you. You have in front of you the FY twenty-four actual to budget as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Saugus Public Schools has expended and encumbered twenty million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred seventy dollars, ninety-five cents. I really have no concerns as of March, you know, always watching McKinney-Ventor Transportation and um, and Translation Line and those types of lines, but so far, um, I haven't seen any big um deviations. So we should be okay going into the spring season. You also have in front of you the grant balances as of March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, which is when I drew them down. Again, that's just a snapshot in time, it just allows you to see where our spending is with the grants. The third document that you have is the support for Budget Amendment Number Six and Budget Amendment Number Six has entered into munis. What I'd like to do during the month of March is do a payroll projection and ensure that all our lines are accurate. From the beginning of the year, when you do that, beginning of the year, salary, budget, and that, there are a lot of leaves, there are people who rescind leave, people who go on leave, there's still a little bit of turnover, and so I try to capture all those savings. The savings from all of that is going into three buckets. Translation Line needs a couple thousand more, that's not too bad, as you remember last year was significantly more. Buildings and grounds will need another nine thousand dollars in paper products and custodial supplies, toilet paper, hand towels, those sorts of items. And the last item, um, I'm still working on this, believe it or not, in FY twenty-one, we put money aside for two vans, we have the first van ready, um, it is with the town to sign off on the paperwork, so hopefully, any day now, we will take possession of that first van. This is a van that the eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old program uses as well as smaller athletic teams, so it's really of great benefit to the district. Unfortunately, the price went up, so we could not afford the second van. So the town accountant, in speaking with her, said that I could create another purchase order for the balance, we could keep the balance from the first purchase order after paying for the first van, take a balance, uh, a second purchase order from this year and pay for the van that way. So I've looked at all that. I've also looked into trading in the two student activity vans that we currently have, they are fifteen years old, so it would be good to just get those off the road. And I'm also looking to trade in the van that was used in the lunch program, that is thirteen or fourteen years old as well. So um, in working with town procurement is to how to do that legally under chapter thirty-B. So, as you can see, a lot of moving parts. And the balance that I need after all of that is thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and two dollars, with fingers crossed that it does not go up again, because as you all saw, with the port of Baltimore being closed, that kind of put a hold to um, delivery of vehicles, so I'm a little concerned the price will go up again, but this will be the bulk of it, I believe. Does anyone have any questions?
No, I don't. Actually, I do have one question, that's just out of curiosity. What the heck is the cellphone grant?
I'm sorry?
The cellphone grant, what is that?
Cellphone grant.
Oh, uh, that was for the high school, uh, that's the grant to help administration find solutions to minimizing use of student cellphone use.
Okay. Gotcha, okay. Hey, um, if there's no questions, uh, can we get a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion to approve budget entry number six.
All right, Chair will second. Uh, should we do a roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries four zero. Okay, next up, we have a new business, thank you, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you.
We have a new business approval of bills dated eleven, April eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and amount to five hundred thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents.
Motion to approve.
Chair will second, uh, Ms. McBride?
Yes.
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 Yes. And next up, we have approval of school committee minutes for March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, open session.
Motion to approve.
Steph, can you second this one, because I'm uh, I have to abstain, I wasn't here.
Oh, making motion?
Just second.
Yeah, I second that one.
Hey, Ms. McBride, we do a roll call? Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 I'm staying. And next, we have approval of school committee minutes for March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four for executive session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Hatch seconds, um, Ms. McBride, we do a roll call?
Yes.
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 I'm staying. Hey, uh, next up, we have the high school seal of literacy presentation. Are you Mr. Hatch or?
Nope, it's not, it's not.
Good evening, my name is Gosha Napp, I am the ELL coach for the District of Saugus. I have two friends from the senior class, Juanita and Nicole, and they will speak in a minute. And we are here today to tell you about a new wonderful opportunity for high school seniors in Saugus. For the first time, um, we are offering the Massachusetts State Seal of Bilinguality. Massachusetts State Seal of Bilinguality is a special award, a designation given to graduating seniors from any Massachusetts high school who prove that they are, they have high level of proficiency in two languages, so English and one other language. It could be more than one foreign language. The Department of Education um introduced this initiative in two thousand nineteen, I believe, and there are several goals. For students and their families, this is important because it recognizes and sort of certifies attainment of um, not, not only bilingualism but bilinguality skills. For universities, colleges, this is important because um, it's a way to recognize and give um, and give credit, college, free college credit to students, incoming students who hold the seal. For employers, future employers, this is important because it provides a method to identify people with bilinguality skills. And for schools and communities, this encourages younger students to learn foreign languages, to reach that high level of um proficiency. And here's probably a good moment to explain the difference between bilingualism and bilinguality. To be bilingual means to um, speak and understand in another language, to be able to communicate. To be bilinguistic, it also means to be able to read and write at a high proficiency level in that other language. For our um, high school seniors, to be able to earn the seal, they had to receive a score of four hundred seventy-two or higher on the tenth grade, grade ELA MCAS. They also had to earn a score of intermediate-high on an approved world language assessment to satisfy the um criteria of world language proficiency. We selected a test that had nine levels and the students had to reach level six or above, with um, level nine being, um, I would compare it to um, a college student speaking fluently and functioning in college-level classes. And of course, students have to fulfill all other graduation requirements to get that diploma, uh, that seal on their diploma. In Massachusetts, it looks like this, up to date, um, over nine thousand students received the seal since two thousand nineteen. There are two hundred and thirteen high schools in Massachusetts that offer this award and there are um eleven public institutions, higher ed institutions, that offer free credit and they have actually language on their website that um states that they will offer free credit to a student who um has the seal of bilinguality. This is the list of the current institutions um that offer free credit, there are possibly more, these are the ones that um, the Department of Education knows of. And um, here are the students from um Saugus High School who earned, qualified to earn the seal. We tested twenty-one students and out of those twenty-one, fifteen students qualify, which is quite amazing. On average, Massachusetts high schools um award the seal to five percent of their graduating class. For us, this was the first year um, offering the seal and we have eight percent.
Wow.
And after the deadlines, um, I had a few students to come and try to apply for the seal when it was too late. So I anticipate that next year, we will have more students receiving the seal. And this is um, a good moment for Juanita and Nicole to say a few words about their experience and why this was important to them.
When I took the seal of bilinguality, it was really important for me because growing up, I would see how my family members struggled, being in the US, not being able to understand a single word that other people would say in English. And for me, helping them is like, it makes me like really happy and I knew that it would give me like new opportunities and like, um, and as a Spanish speaker, helped me build more connections with others.
Hi. Well, I'm gonna read it because I get a little nervous, but I wrote it down. It said, um, "I'm really proud of being able to speak two languages well, it helps me connect with more people and share my culture with them. Plus, being bilingual makes me better at solving problems and doing different things. I'm the first one in my family who can speak two languages so fluently. It's a big deal to me, I feel like it's my job to help others whom I struggle with language barriers, by doing that, I can make sure that they can access all the good stuff they need. So speaking two languages isn't cool, this isn't just cool for me, it's also a way for me to make things better for other people, it shows that no matter where you come from, you can do awesome stuff, help others along the way. I'm also really happy that I took this test because I'm the first one in my whole family who's going to be in college, I'm going to be the first one, and I'm also really happy that I'm making my parents proud because they took the chance and the risk to come to the United States, to take me and my sister. It was really hard for me to um, speak another, starting to like learn a whole different language. I learned English in just one year by me getting bullied and all this type of stuff just pushed me to like accomplish like all my goals. So yeah, it just makes me really excited and happy that I can prove to people that you're able to do things if you put your mind to it. Just making my parents proud, they're right here, it just makes me really happy, so.
You guys are amazing, honestly, it really is.
I think you should be so proud.
You guys should both be proud of yourselves, you guys uh, must be such an awesome feeling to be able to help your family too, you know?
Yeah, it's a, it's a struggle, mostly because like, I know like parents here that are immigrants and however, however it is, it's really hard for them to even learn the language if they don't have the opportunities or like all that type of stuff to like be out there and have the time. For us, it's way easier to learn it, mostly because we do go to school, we do have the chances to ask questions and do all this type of stuff, they don't. My parents work most of the time, they don't have the time to learn it, they, they struggle with a lot of stuff. So, I'm like really glad that me and my sister got to the point that we got to learn the language, help them with anything, like, it's really hard for me, mostly since I'm the one going to college, not getting any help from them, because they don't know the language, they don't know what they need to do, so I'm like the only one looking out there for information, doing all this type of stuff by myself, so it's like a struggle for me and for them because they do want to help, but they can't, you know? So, I'm just really glad that I'm able to do it by myself.
Well, good, like I said, you guys are amazing and uh, show your parents very happy back there, got amazing kids over here.
You can see I'm proud there.
Congratulations. So what'd you say, fifteen, fifteen kids total?
Fifteen out of twenty-one students.
Wow, that's awesome, wow.
But I do know for a fact that there are more students out there, but this being the first year, um, nobody was familiar with this opportunity, many students didn't recognize the value of it yet, but um, I already know that even next year, this is a bigger deal for all.
Awesome. I'll show you guys do well in college too, so thank you very much for coming, you guys uh, really impressed.
So we are also planning, uh, you can see on the, on the slide at the bottom, there is this medallion that we uh purchased for every student who um will receive this award and a special certificate, so we will invite all parents and students to the senior award night, where they will really truly be able to feel proud, you know, and see their kids on stage. But um, you know, the, the true award is that uh special insignia that will go on their high school diploma, that will certify that they're bilingual and bilinguistic.
Well, congratulations, congratulations. Awesome feat. Okay, so we had um, we had some pretty good stuff tonight.
We did.
Turned the a cappella, these ladies, senior class girls, it's. I wish every meeting was like this, well, except for this part where you had no sound for the first uh forty-five.
You're very animated, I think they could.
Okay, so next we come up to public comment. Okay, so, public comment, let's talk about public comment before we do public comment. So public comment, you come up, comment, you got three minutes to say what you want to say, uh, we don't do back and forth, uh, I know sometimes we get into these discussions, but we follow Robert's rules here for, for a reason. Robert's rules say that we sit here, we listen, we nod our head, we don't put the superintendent on the spot, we don't put the school committee members on the spot, you say what you want to say, and then you go sit down, and then we thank you. So, if we don't answer you, don't take it personal, this is just what we do for Robert's rules. Go ahead, sir. Your three minutes starts from the second you get out of your chair, right?
Bill Palmerini, SCA president, um, I just want to make mention to the public because you missed the most incredible performance by Tonal Chaos, uh, because of the sound issues. So, just so you're aware, we watched a presentation that was phenomenal. Now, I've been to Pentatonix, is one of my favorite a cappella groups, and these children were performed better than some of the performances I've seen, they were phenomenal. So I would suggest, highly suggest, that people make their way next, on Thursday, the twenty-fifth of April, at seven, I believe, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, they're going to be doing a presentation with schools from all over Massachusetts, um, Ms. Manuel invited people to come from other schools to perform as well, uh, our group will be performing, it's going to be a show of all shows, so try to make it, April twenty-fifth, and unfortunately, you missed the songs because they were incredible.
And the beatbox was unbelievable.
The beatbox, it was unbelievable, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Time's up, anyway. No, I was kidding. Anybody else? Mr. Sullivan, go ahead, sir.
Hi. Hi, Brendan Sullivan, principal of Saugus Middle High School, uh, there was three great things from, related to my building tonight, so I just wanted to stop by reiterating, um, Mr. Palmerini's point, please come out and support us on, and our Tonal Chaos on the twenty-fifth, um, it's a great chance to see them perform, to see the other communities, and it's also going to be nice for the community when you stand there and you see all the other people from the other schools come in and be envious of the Lemoine Mitchell Auditorium. And it is, it is, it is a point of pride for the district, so you can take great pride in the fact that you'll be the envy of all these surrounding towns afterwards. I want to thank my senior class president and vice president, they do a tremendous job, I have, you know, I've seen a lot of senior classes and I've seen a lot of great presidents come through and I've advised some, I can honestly say, they have worked as hard or harder than anyone that I've ever seen. This is a phenomenal class, so um, graduation is going to be here before you know it, so again, mark your calendars for May thirty-first, six PM, at Sereno Stadium, come out and support this great class, and it really is just a phenomenal president and vice president, their whole board, um, really great class. And finally, I want to commend all the students who took the seal of bilinguality, um, taking a test, we, you know, between MCAS and all the other tests, it's hard to convince students to take another test, to have fifteen out of twenty-one pass it the first time through, those are excellent numbers, um, and I want to commend all the students who took it, I really appreciate that, and I really want to give a shout out to Gosha, um, she was just relentless on me, uh, to let it, to put this into place, to let her run wild with it, and I led her eventually, and she had phenomenal results, and I just can't thank her enough for what she did for our kids. So, uh, see you all on the twenty-fifth, and thank you very much.
Mr. Sullivan, one thing.
Yes.
I know I forgot to point this out before, and I think, I don't even think we talked about the meeting, but I think something very important, uh, during MCAS, when we did the math MCAS, every kid that's on IEP at the high school passed the math MCAS.
Yeah.
Which is incredible, so the teachers are doing a great job up there when it comes to that stuff.
We're making tremendous progress in areas, so.
Absolutely.
We're in the midst of MCAS now and the kids are taking it really seriously and I'm very excited for it.
Yeah, that was a big milestone and I think we bypassed it somehow, but uh, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Doing good up there, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, Andrew, do you want to come up and drop some names about where you had dinner and everything else, no? Here he comes, there he is.
We can't say anything.
Mr. Whitcomb, two twelve Essex Street, apartment one oh two. I wasn't going to say anything at this meeting because I'm a humble, kind man, but because the chairman decided to make his remarks, I'm going to let the folks at home know exactly the chairman decided to make his remarks, I'm gonna let the folks at home know exactly what happened to the audio. I could say confidently that it was your fault for touching the button next to the television, not any of the folks in the back, so, we apologize for the inconvenience, the performance from the folks, that was incredible, and perhaps we could come up with another arrangement, we could film part of their performance, if we're not doing it already, and air that, but they were incredible, shout out to them, and as always, I appreciate you bringing these folks and these successful students to share with the public. Thank you all.
Whoops, time up. Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Anybody get any members' comments or anything? You guys wanna say anything?
You? You leave.
Vinnie never lets us talk.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, one more thing, just wanna say, I kinda feel responsible for Mr. Sereno not being here, because, uh, I gave him a pair of, uh, eclipse glasses with no lenses, so, it was my fault, so, but I just, he's recovered well, he'll be all right, he'll be here next week. All right, I believe Mr. Hatch had a motion to close, um.
Second.
Shit, Mr. Fisher seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you all for coming, we'll see you in, uh, it's two weeks?
Two weeks.
Thank you.